Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Revere City Council meeting of November 25th. Please rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Roll call of the members, Counselor Riggo.
Here.
Here, Counselor Correggio.
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here, Counselor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas. Here, Counselor Patch.
Here.
Here, Counselor Penta.
Here.
Here, Counselor Powers. Here, Counselor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, a quorum is present. Calendar item number one, hearing called is ordered on the establishment of the minimum residential factor for the purpose of setting the tax rate for fiscal year 2014. At the request of the Board of Assessors, the public hearing on the establishment of the minimum residential factor has been rescheduled for the regular city council meeting of December 2nd, 2013.
So that's the next week item.
Calendar item number two, unfinished business, communication from the Board of Assessors relative to the acceptance of certain acts to grant additional real estate tax exemptions to certain persons.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's an item that's tied in with the residential tax rate, so we're going to table that until we vote on the tax rate altogether.
Calendar item number three, report of the zoning subcommittee.
Counselor Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you and most of the members know, because most of you were at the subcommittee meeting last Wednesday, we considered Boston Wellness Association's special permit request to operate a medical marijuana treatment center at 44 Railroad Street in Revere, and I think we had a very lively discussion about it. Because of the kind of truncated process that we've been facing, the committee determined not to report it out favorably or unfavorably, but rather that it would be better if the, having received some information at this point, the council is perhaps discuss it and consider it tonight, or maybe not tonight. My concern, and it has been, and I asked the city clerk to see if she could get a clarification for the Department of Public Health, is the rapidity which we have to do this without really having had an opportunity to fully consider the entire project. And I will say this, I've reviewed the Code of Massachusetts regulations, the regulations regarding this, and they are impressively thorough. Nonetheless, there's always something that someone overlooks. And I'm not saying it is or it isn't here, but we haven't had an opportunity to determine that at this point. The other issue that we have not had an opportunity to determine is whether or not, in what kind of, in what process we would use to develop a fee, if any, for issuing a special permit. So, quite honestly, I personally am at a quandary. I think the subcommittee was at a quandary as to what to do, and we're laying it in the hands, I think, at this point of the entire city council, and I think it's the will of the president what we should do this evening.
Okay, comments from the council. Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this issue's been in front of us, as far as I'm concerned, well over a year. When residents voted this throughout the state, over 800,000 people additionally, yes. City Revere was 8,600, I believe, to 6,400. Since then, this council right away, we basically had a knee-jerk reaction to not in my neighborhood. Sent the letter off to put a auditorium on it, we got a letter back from the state saying, "Don't think so." The people overwhelmingly voted for this, get your house in order, pick a zoning spot for it, and then have the council decide if to fight against it. The city council zoning committee, Frank Stringi, John Festa, put the hits together, came up with one of the most exclusive areas in the city, as far as I'm concerned, happens to be in my ward. Still think it's very exclusive. With the people voting overwhelmingly, this card's out there now from doctors throughout the state, throughout, all over the place, they can't go anywhere, and the state is looking for this thing to go fast-track for that purpose. We've held a public hearing on this, no one came up here in opposition. Basically, we shut that public hearing down, had a zoning committee meeting on it, counseled all the right to ask as many questions as they wanted to. We had people here shipped in from California, throughout the applicant, which I respect speculatively was the right thing to do. The state regulations on this are so open, so intense, that everything has to be abided by their laws. As far as a fee, mitigation fee, it's an unknown factor. Do we know how good this is going to be? I mean, there may be one of these, Boston, right up the street, we don't know. You know, will they go to Railroad Avenue and buy a product there? I don't know. But we're giving our people an opportunity to do that, and I hope they are very successful because it's a nonprofit organization that will give a lot of our city nonprofit. So I think putting something on their honorary value at this point in time, I think is unjust to us, at City Council, unjust to taxpayers, probably unjust to the applicant. So, without that being said, I can go on and on why I am for this, and I go on to medical reasons why I'm for this. Because I'm going by firsthand what I know, and I know people that suffered, that could have used this at any given time, without taking pills that caused their liver, their kidneys, and every other failure. There's a need for this, it's across the whole country. There's doctors in favor of this. But I think, I mean, to hold it up, there's applications going into the state now, that if we put our applicant behind the eight ball, then you could see one right over the lineies, Boston. You could see one in Chelsea, you could see one anywhere, with us nothing to gain. And hopefully, this is a successful applicant. I hope it is. I've known Matt for 15 years, I've seen what he did. He's not an unknown. He's known to the city, his reputation in this council, and I know every council that I've talked to speak very highly of him. He will not change the city, does the furthest thing from anybody's mind, especially mine. First-rate, I'm sure he's looking to make a name for himself in a city that hopefully can give all kinds of money out of. And, you know, I can go on and on and on why I'm for this, why I think it's the right location. My biggest thing tonight is, to get this vote tonight, is what's feared. The applicant actually, I think, asked for an extension with the state, everything is supposed to have been in the 21st of November, here we add a 25th of November. So I'm asking, Mr. President, for a roll call vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Okay, before we do the roll call, of course, we'll have the other council speak. Counselor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. My initial reaction to medical marijuana coming to Revere was obviously similar to many other people. But since learning and being educated in more detail as to what it's all about, the first thing is we got a mandate from the public suggesting that not only was it approved in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but the city of Revere overwhelmingly approved it. I was shocked at the time, and I didn't vote for it. Now, when it comes down on the process, there are 159 eligible applicants out within the Commonwealth, and I reviewed a globe article this past week that went in somewhat detail of what they have to go through, the procedure they have to go through in order to do this fulfillment with this nonprofit. The first is putting up $500,000 investment to show that you're financially able to do such a project. And then you go from several stringent criteria that allows you to be a viable applicant. And I still wasn't totally convinced. But lo and behold, I wasn't feeling that great this afternoon, and I happened to be home watching Dr. Oz. And Dr. Oz had a show today, one of the segments of the show was medical marijuana. And to think if anybody saw that and viewed that with the intent that was given, there wouldn't be a person in this city or Revere who would vote against it. They showed some children in such need that all drug medication has ruined other parts of their body and brought them to a point where there was no alternative for these kids. Someone suggested medical marijuana. They gave it to these children, it helped them unbelievable. It didn't hurt their kidneys, it didn't hurt their pancreas, it didn't hurt any other portion of part of their body. It helped several other patients. Now, that's just a small segment. Multiply this by the hundreds of thousands of people within our country who need treatment that aren't being served by the medical staff now with drugs. So, this is a great alternative. Now, are there given lots saying, "How are we going to protect this?" Because I also saw another article, and whereas they did a raid in one of the local areas, and there was 150 plants that were secured in Roxbury with a street value of $700,000 to $1 million. And I heard, I watched the subcommittee meeting you had this past week, where as they were saying that they're going to have upwards of 250 plants per growing session at this location. So there's a lot of money involved here, and there's, but given the fact, and I saw who the head of the security would be, and I saw the detailed information from the very learned people who came to that podium and spoke their presence, and told it in a very professional manner, they all come with very high credentials. So we're not giving, we're not considering awarding this applicant something that they don't have substance to back up all they've been talking about. Guy Colodus, he was the sheriff of Worcester County, he was almost a statewide official, short of a few votes. So, these are people with integrity. These are people that, you know, aren't out there to do injustice to our community. These are people that are looking, obviously it's a nonprofit, but there's going to be profit involved in all nonprofits. I mean, they wouldn't be doing this because they're the good guys of the country. There's money involved in everything here, so put that aside. But this is, in my opinion, and I saw Dr. Oz's program today, was like, I couldn't believe it, I mean, how beneficial it is to individuals who need this. Far be it from me to deny that process. Hopefully, I won't need that someday. But God forbid I do. I wouldn't hesitate to do it. Now, you're not sitting there thinking about some kids around a room doing a pipe, or doing some, you know, in a dorm room. We're not talking that. We're not talking that. It's the same thing we're talking about alcohol in these rooms of dorms. We're not talking about that. This, and this is a different purpose under a different challenge, in a very, very stringent condition, so. I would like to hear what the rest of the councils have to say, and what the public has to say, and I, Counselor Penta said it right, we've been talking about this for a year now. I mean, this is no surprise. We had a public hearing a couple of weeks ago, we had another subcommittee meeting. I do, I view Facebook unfortunately, and I saw some of the commentary on there. I regard that as something like, you know, that's somebody's opinion, that's a valid opinion. But this is the place where we had the public hearings. We don't have the public hearings on Facebook. This is where we had the public hearing, and everybody was notified of it. Everybody had an awareness of what was going on. This wasn't some mystery that was just thrown about. Because I was first very, very apprehensive to this, I'll tell you right now, and I still, am I 1,000% for this unit? No, I'm not. But I think that's a challenge that we ought to look at. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Riggo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to hear that Counselor Guanasso was able to watch Dr. Oz today and see some of the medical benefits. It reminds me of a program that I watched actually on CNN with Dr. Sanjay Gupta about the benefits, and he had been a strong adversary of medical marijuana for a long time, and he had changed his mind about the benefits medically. But I think that aside, what we're looking at isn't necessarily a guarantee for Boston Wellness to get a treatment facility set up. So, I agree with Counselor Penta that we are kind of putting the cart before the horse if we want to talk about a mitigation agreement or a host agreement. But what I would like to see, if we're going to move forward, that we have a condition, at least on the special permit, that if they do get a license to operate by the Commonwealth, and if it's, you know, February 1st, and they're picked as a dispensary, that they at least come back to us and we have that conversation about a host agreement or some type of, you know, payment to the city. And I think that would be probably the best course of action for us going forward, to make sure that, you know, it may be too early to talk about a fee, because we don't know what their business is going to be like, they don't know what their business is going to be like. And it is a little bit of putting the cart before the horse, but we do need some assurance that they can come back and have a conversation about what benefits we could get out of them being in our city, because, you know, it is, there is an opportunity for us to maybe get some additional funds for drug awareness programming, and even maybe some drug unit. I know that's what other communities are looking at, and I would hope that we could, at least, at the very least, have a condition that we come back and have a conversation about a host agreement. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with what I've heard so far. I was one of the people, I guess you would call, with the knee-jerk reaction. I was trying to put zeros or noes in all our zoning to not allow it anywhere. I've since been, I guess you'd have to say educated, as to what medical marijuana really is. I had the fears of some of the horror stories I've heard, and where people were abusing the privilege of having a prescription for medical marijuana. But I've since talked to a lot of people in true need of medical marijuana, and far be it from me to prevent a cancer patient from using medical marijuana to help them get through chemotherapy, and I've heard a lot of stories, and so I've now become a proponent of this. But that brings us to this particular application, and how it is set up, and how we're going to protect our citizens, should they be fortunate enough to get one of the very few state licenses for this type of facility. We saw the president or the principal of this business, Matt Filbin, who we all know very well, as a well-respected businessman in this community, and he's proven to me that he's a person of integrity, and he's proven to all of us that he can turn a bad situation into a good situation for us in the city. So I don't have any fear of that. And I think to hold this up would be unfair to this applicant, as we all know, there is a deadline, and we all know there's a lot of money involved, not just to be made, but there's a lot of money involved to become an applicant. And I think that they've done everything, I think, in an exemplary way, with the type of people they have on their board, the type of individuals whose name is on this, Boston Wellness, is all high-quality people. So, I think I agree with my colleague to the far right, that it's certainly premature for a host agreement, but I think we all know that, should they be fortunate enough to get a license, that will be on the table, and it can be structured in such a way based on a progression of what their business is, and I think everybody will be satisfied with the type of agreement we'll come to. So I'm going to support this going forward tonight. I have heard from several people who are fearful like I was, until I was educated as to what this actually is, and people are afraid of their children having access to marijuana, and there are a lot of legitimate fears out there, that most of us who've done our research know that that's not going to be a problem here, but I don't take those fears lightly, because some serious people have come to me with these legitimate fears. So I think we all know that we're going to protect our citizens, and so I'm going to support this going forward tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Patch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say that I agree with all the previous speakers. I think they all made some good points. As far as myself, I originally was, I did not vote when it was on the ballot for it, and I, and we were, unanimously, as a whole, as a council, we voted to try to keep it out, but we were told we couldn't do so, as mentioned before. But since then, like Counselor Zambudo, I have educated myself with the use of the medical marijuana. And I've seen on the internet, and also on the news, on the TV, there was one story about a young girl in, I believe it was New Jersey, that nothing worked for her but the medical marijuana. So, the point being is, you know, I do see some negative stuff on Facebook, and, you know, that we as a whole is trying to push this through and what have you, but that is not the case. Like the council before me said, we've been working diligently over this matter for over a year, and we do have a spot now where I think, as the Watch Six Counselor, that where a possible spot could be in Watch Six, that I'm afraid that that is not a good spot. And I believe that actually the spot that Mr. Filbin is going to use, I know very well, and I believe that's the ideal spot for it. I did see in the newspaper, The Globe, I don't know if it was the past week, they had the map of the Massachusetts, and they had all the ones, applicants, the number of applicants for every city. And I don't know where, they had three in Revere, so I don't know where the other two, where the other two are. They haven't come forward, I don't know what they're waiting for. But I know this team here, that Mr. Filbin put together, I've known Guy for, Colodus for several years, he is a public security expert, he certainly is, and you've got Mrs. Donovan, who was an educator for years, and principal, head of Pope John in Everett. I just think they just put a good team together. And they're good people, and they got the right idea, and for this type of project, that we should have this type of team put it forward. So I am going to vote in favor of it tonight, and hopefully, again, there's no guarantee that he's going to get it, it's just that we're going to vote, if we vote in favor of it, that he can go forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. When this first came up, about two years ago, after the last statewide election, I was somewhat ignorant to the fact of what it really was. I assumed basically that, you know, marijuana, anyone can go in and get a joint or weed or whatever, okay? But then as we got educated in the past year, you have to, you have to, you need, what the hell?
Prescription.
You need a prescription, two doctors sign off on it, okay? It's not easy, you can call in one doctor, okay? But as they come into the place to get their prescriptions, what happens is, they go into a computer base, and the computer base, anyone else around, they have access to it. So you're not going to be able to go from one doctor to another doctor, et cetera, okay? I was a little worried about it, as I said, you know, looking at the security of it, and basically within the last month, I don't think anything is going to be more secure in Revere than this facility on Railroad Ave. There's no question about it, all right? I looked at, listened to Guy Colodus last week, in conjunction with the police chief, they will do whatever we request and whatever Joe Cafarelli requests. If they want people down there, there's going to be so much motion pictures down there, that no one would want to get in there, to be honest with you. I, for one, will vote in favor of it, because I believe the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the CMR, has put all kinds of rules and regulations in there to protect the citizens of our community. Also, what we're going to put in there is just another buffer to protect our citizens. So, I thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for relaying some of my concerns at the subcommittee meeting. There are a few issues, I think, with this that makes it so controversial, and one of the first thing is, subjects like this invoke really strong emotions in two groups of people. There are people that have been affected by drug and alcohol abuse, and people that have been affected by debilitating diseases such as cancer. And when you talk about these two groups of people, you're going to get the most heartfelt, sincere concerns when issues like this come up. So, like some of my colleagues have echoed, you know, it's a business that's going to have a lot of benefits for people that have really severe medical needs, but you're also going to see concerns from people that have been affected by drug and alcohol abuse, and see this and, you know, not be fully educated on the facility and immediately have a kind of gut reaction against it. But once you read into it and look at some of the things that it entails, it's not just, as some of the other councils have alluded to, actual marijuana, there are pills, there are lozenges, it's almost like a pharmacy, these are actual prescriptions. So it's a lot more in-depth, and, you know, I did have several concerns with it that I think were brought up, security, obviously, but I know our chief will be on board with whatever measures need to be taken. And I think that something that makes this kind of business unique in Massachusetts, where it's not in other parts of the country, is that this will be one of the first. So it's not like in California where there are hundreds, where, you know, security's not going to be as tight, because it's just like a gas station, you know, there's one every so often. There's going to be one in this community, so it makes it a higher commodity, it makes it something that's more valuable. So we want to make sure we have top-notch security 24 hours in a facility like that. Another one of my concerns is that we have increased programs in our schools that educate our students about what this is, that it is a medicine, it is a treatment, and that's where they really take it seriously, because we don't want our kids to think that this is a joke, and we don't want our community to think that this is a joke. We want them, as our counselors have said, to be educated, and I think that that's one of the key components of this issue. It's new, and it's up and coming, and some of the textbooks in our health classes are out of date, they don't talk about this. This isn't an issue. You know, you hear things like, "Say no to drugs," and when you hear "medical marijuana," the second word, and that's a drug. So it's sending very confusing messages to our youth that we need to clarify, and it's our responsibility to teach them what that is. And another concern of mine was that employees of the facility would have random alcohol and drug tests, which I'm sure would be worked in somehow, but as I missed the meeting, it wasn't clarified, clear on some of that. But I think education's a key word in this, and since it's so new and something that we're all learning about, if we continue to educate our community on it and each other, it can be something really good, and I hope that we continue to do that. And finally, I think that we have a top-notch group putting this together. You know, what more can you say about some of the individuals that are collaborating to make this happen? It's not like it's a random business, these are people that are not only putting their business on the line, they're putting their own reputations, just like when we speak on something, we're putting our name on it, they're putting their name in all of the things that they have done in the past on this, and if they're willing to... And if they're willing to, I think we should be willing to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. When I vote on a particular issue, there are several questions I ask myself. First of all, is this a benefit to the community? Well, I believe in this particular case, it is a benefit to the community, particularly to those who are in ill health, have cancer problems, and need this in place of some of the other treatments that they would get. This is something that does far less—if any damage—to a person's body that's suffering from cancer. I had somebody in my own family several years ago ate cancer, and I watched them go through chemotherapy. And it wasn't not a pleasant thing to watch. It was a very difficult thing to watch, and it was more difficult for them to endure. I ask myself, what about security? From what I've heard up here, this is going to be like an armed camp. There are going to be barbed wire fences, razor barbed wire on top of them. Then you say to yourself, where do the street drugs come from? The OxyContin's, the Percocets, those type of drugs? They come from pharmacies. And what type of security are there at pharmacies? None, so to speak. Nowhere is near what is being proposed at this particular facility. And then I ask myself, how do the voters of this city feel about this? Well, I'll tell you. Ninety-three hundred people in November 2012 voted for this particular referendum, okay? In the ward I represent, Ward Five, eighteen-hundred-and-sixty people voted against this versus twelve-hundred-and-eighty-six. So that tells me something.
For this.
Correct. That tells me something. For me to vote against this tonight would be voting against the people that sent me up to this chamber to represent them. There are some people that are against it. I was against it back then. I was uneducated with regard to the help that this would give to people that need this treatment, need it so desperately. And then I ask myself, who's involved in this? It's not like some stranger coming up here asking for a special permit. It's not like some stranger coming up here and—like they would go before the licensing board and ask for a liquor license in a neighborhood. This is something that's been thoroughly thought out by Frank Stringi, Planning and Community Development Director, who I have the utmost faith in. If I had to trust anyone in this city with a zoning matter, it would be Frank Stringi that would give me the honest answers. Now, again, who is proposing this? Fellow that came into this city several years ago, Mr. Philbin, took an old dilapidated rooming house and turned it into a motel with a national flag at a great expense to himself. Something that we all can be proud of. Not only something we can be proud of, something we get not only real estate taxes from, but that 6% room excise tax every time he rents a room down there. So I can tell you this evening, I will be voting for this. I don't see any problems with it. I've talked to the chief of police also, and he tells me that they will have adequate security at that facility. So again, I will support this this evening. I will support a businessman that's come into this community and already proved himself to me. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Patrick, you want to say a few words?
Sure.
Name and address for the record, please.
Well, I want to thank Ira for having me up here, but I also want to thank Mr. Rizzo, Mayor Rizzo, Counselor Rego, and Counselor Novoselsky, and also Counselor Zambudo for listening to my calls this weekend, as I probably nagged you all just a little bit. I can see that everyone here seems to be in favor, and I respect that because what I hope to understand today is we're going to be approving the zoning and not the—all the ramifications that come along with the facility. Because when it comes down to the facility itself and what will come out of it, I think that there needs to be some more conversations in regards to what types of products, like Counselor Giannino mentioned, what types of products we will allow them to serve. Giving them the zoning—or giving the zoning for a business, whichever one it may be—certainly Mr. Philbin seems like a stand-up businessman, and he already is in the city, so that would probably be great. I would expect that when it comes to the—what happens in the business is discussed and further, and also we have some more community input. One of the other things that I wanted to mention is—we keep talking about, you know, we're dragging out, unfortunately, people that have cancer. And it's a shame that that's going to be the poster child for medical marijuana, when in fact, that isn't the majority of the use. Also, in 1996, Purdue Pharma came out with Oxycontin, and they trucked out people that were receiving chemotherapy, and they said that this is going to be the solve-all for them. That didn't end up very well. So what I want to know is, today, are we voting on zoning or the—all the regulations that come—that are involved with the—
If I may, if I may. We are voting for the applicant to operate the facility. The zoning was passed last month, or the month before. So right now, we are talking about the application to operate a facility, bottom line.
And then—thank you very much. And then from there, will there be—will there be other conversations or agreements in regards to how the business is operated?
Well, that is actually a state issue, and that was going to be part of my discussion after you spoke. Excuse me. And what it is is—and I—you know, do part of it now—is that we are a legislative body. We do zoning, and we authorize locations for people to operate. Now you have the fine line, just like Law and Order, okay? You have the cops doing their thing, and you got the lawyers doing their thing. In our case, we're the—you know, the cops trying to put everything together, understand it, and find a reason, potentially, not to give it to someone, okay? In this case, that hasn't come out. There is no solid, good reason that the courts would allow us to say no to these things. Getting right off the bat, I'll say, I plan on voting to move this ahead. But I want this clear, that—you know, I've read Facebook, and a lot of the counselors said a lot that I was going to say, and I appreciate that. I saw all the Facebook issues over the last three or four days, and I can realize that all the people that have spoken about it are upstanding people. They have kids in the school department and the school system, and they're concerned, no question. But I think, you know, the way we look at this is, once we give the applicant the right to operate at this location with our public safety rules that we're going to put that Counselor Riordan's going to include as part of the site plan review—when we talk about that in a few minutes—that have been added to it by Frank and the police chief, the fire chief, building inspector, everybody has a piece of the action in this thing. This isn't something just that we put together. So a lot of heads will put together on this thing. So it's the Facebook—you know, everything that's on Facebook is unknown. People know—the worst thing that people can run into is, like Counselor Giannino said, it's the first time this thing is happening. And what happens when you see the unknown? Fear sets in. And people kind of panic to a point where I don't want it because of A, B, C, D, E, F, G. We have to control ourselves and really set our minds to it as to why this is being done, how we are controlling it when it comes out with all the rules that the state is going to put into the CMRs. And those change every single day. The state is learning something, everything new with the Department of Public Health. They have a large piece, in fact, a major piece, in their operation. Not us. Not us. As far as the fee is concerned and the mitigation, I know they've hinted that they would be open to us, you know, at a later date. But we have to realize too—and I don't—I want to bring back an old SOAR that we ran into a TD video. The application came in, they squashed the application, and all of a sudden, we set up new rules. And it was proven we can't do that. In the case—my—the way I read this is, when we talk of fee structure—we have not set that fee structure up. So my thought is—and it's not an official one, but it's only a thought—as to whether or not these fees are legitimate at this point because we have an applicant already on the books. And now we constantly—you're not supposed to set things up after they make the application. And that's what happened with TD. And that's why I'm relaying to this. But I could be wrong, you know, and it's something that, you know, we'll have to get a legal opinion on. But I know they're open to working with us when or if they get their application passed by the state, when they get their license from the state. We're only allowing the location. Public safety-wise, we had a big, big discussion on that at the meeting last week. The chief is on board. He's already been spoken to, right, with Guy Glotus, you know, the head of security. And he's prepared to deal with this thing. There was one thing that was brought up the other night, was whether or not we should compel them to have a revered police officer on-site during open hours. And I—that's something that we can decide and whether or not the chairman wants to look at that. That's another thing we can look at down the road. But I know this—this location, okay? I work with Frank Stringi myself on this. Counselor Powers worked on it. Several other councils worked on it. We felt this was the best location. And I don't want to say the worst thing, but for what people conceive as the worst thing. Right now—I got—I got that letter from Julie tomorrow, and I understand what she's saying, but a lot of the stuff that was brought up were ifs, ands, ors, no's, or buts. And I'm not—I'm not knocking it down, but I understand where she's coming from. We cannot reopen zoning at this point. You know, if we wanted to do it down the road, we can look at it, but we cannot do that now. We have to act on it. We had the zoning change. An applicant came in. We have to act on the applicant. And that's where we are tonight. And anybody can correct me if they feel I'm wrong or if they want to clarify a little. But I think it's important that we give it a chance, let it work out. And I'm sure that if there are things down the road that are going wrong, we can jump to that gentleman over there, to Phil—Matt Philbin, who is an outstanding gentleman. You know, he's—we've already spoken about him tonight. I can't talk any highly of him. We can go back to them and say, okay, guys, here's the issue we've come up with. Let's find a way to correct it. So, you know, I want you to feel comfortable that we're not walking into this like we don't know what's going on. We all do. We all do. And it's something that the courts told us. We have to do something. We can't shut the door. And one other thing is—they—someone mentioned two other applicants. I got a call from one other applicant. But their problem is finding the spot to do it. And right now, this is the only spot to do it, and they have it. You know, they're going to own the facility down the road when they—you know, after the PNS. The only way someone can do something else is down south of that location in one of the freight companies—if they buy it, one of those big freight companies—can only go south up to the East Boston Line. That's the only spot they can do it in the city. So that's my clarification. To you, I said my piece. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate the clarity, and I do have confidence that the counselors will all do the right thing, and I appreciate that, and holding people accountable. And I do recognize that, you know, in reading up, we can't exactly say no. But my major concern was making—if we had the ability to create stipulations—not to become anti-business, but to be—to make sure that we have, as we mentioned, the tightest and strictest standards so that the community is served as a whole. Because as I may—as you may have read, and we've all read, and some of us watch TV, and of course, there are the benefits out there, but there's also—there's unfortunately, there's a lot of misuse. And even with some of these potentially stand-up organizations, there's a lot of bad things that end up happening. So I understand where the vote would go, and I understand you all agreeing with it today. But I would see if there is a point in the future to make sure that we're—we have all the safeguards in place so that we can learn from the prior mistakes of—you know, you have Maine, Colorado, California, that even though they've been doing it for many years, have still are still struggling to deal with it properly.
Thank you, sir. And you may I say, everybody was concerned about all the other marijuana that's on the streets and the kids are getting, and oh, what if, what if, what if. You know, some of the Maine people that are more responsible, other people that actually buy it at this facility, and what they do with it, where they keep it, in the house. Now it's a house issue. It's a parent's issue. It's a user issue. Now it's beyond us. We can't go out and, you know, control what people do in their homes. So that's my last piece, and I think I'm going to turn it back to Mr. Chairman and give your recommendations on site plan review, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me just say that I don't think we'd be sitting here right now if we weren't duly impressed with the overwhelming worthiness of the applicant, Boston Wellness, and its board of directors. We're well beyond that at this point, and I doubt if there is—it could possibly have been put together a better group to promote this. It appears that—in appearing that the council is willing to move this special permit, I am going to recommend, in addition to the Site Plan and Review Committee list of nine provisions—and I don't know if you want me to read them or not. I—we did go through them completely at the subcommittee level, and the applicant I know is willing to follow them. So I'll let you ponder that in a second. But while I read the CMRs, I did find a couple of things that I thought needed to be addressed. First of all, the CMR does permit the city of town to promulgate its own regulations from a health perspective. So I would condition this on, one, that it is subject to the development of a list of appropriate regulations by our own Board of Health and our old health inspector, if necessary. Allow them to determine that because that's their—that's their—that's their job. Secondly, the—well, maybe lastly, I'll deal with it. But secondly, after reviewing the CMRs, it referred—they refer to the law enforcement authorities, not the specific revered police. I think this should be conditioned on the requirement that any reference to law enforcement authorities in the CMR mean the revered police department. So where the police, our police, are in on everything, including access to the videotape, access to the security measures and records, et cetera, et cetera. Third, I'd suggest that we condition this on that any notices sent to or by the Department of Public Health to our Boston Wellness within the CMRs, because it provides for certain notices if there's deficiencies or if there's issues, that they be carried to our Board of Health as well, so that we stay on top of these things and we're not two steps behind. And lastly, which was my big concern, is the potential for a permitting fee. I know Counselor Rego didn't mention a host agreement, but I think if we put that—those two terms together, we could make this permit subject to the negotiation of a host agreement and our permitting fee with the Board of Health and our—the city health inspector, subject to the approval of the city council, to allow the health inspector to come up with a figure, or if so, if it's necessary, or some plan that we would have a host community agreement and our permitting fee, and then bring it before us, and we could—we would have the last word on the subject. Those are the four areas that I would recommend. In addition, again, to the Site Plan and Review Committee recommendations, they're—the Site Plan and Review recommendations are kind of technical, but as to signage and things like that. And I should say one other thing, and I know one of our issues we have is with children. What—how are these kids going to be affected by this place? There is no advertising permitted on the premises, other than signage that belt Boston Wellness Center is there. There is no "come get your marijuana" or whatever. That's not going to happen. It's going to be—it's strictly going to be Boston Wellness. It's a medical facility. It's intended to be a medical facility, and I believe it'll be operated as a medical facility in the—in the—there is many, many facets of— facility in the, in the, there is many, many facets of oversight in this, I believe. I believe it can and will work on City Revere. Thank you.
Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just briefly, with all due respect to my chairman, and I certainly want the revered police to be the first-named organization, but I'm afraid that that restriction may restrict state police or any other drug enforcement. I hope that's not what, I know that's not his intent, and I'm hoping that that doesn't restrict it to revered police, that's all.
My suggestion is we include the revered police.
Perfect.
As opposed to exclude anybody.
That's wonderful.
So noted. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would think with all the recommendations of Site Plan Review and those of the zoning subcommittee, roll call.
Shall the city council grant a special permit for a medical marijuana treatment center at 44 Railroad Street, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review and the city council? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review.
Mr. President.
Reconsideration will prevail.
Mr. President.
Reconsideration will prevail.
Suspension of rules. All in favor, all opposed, so noted, on reconsideration, hoping that it will not prevail. All in favor, all opposed. It fails. Back to regular order of business.
Calendar item number four, report of the Ways and Means Subcommittee.
Counselor Rigo, before we go into this, I want to recognize Stephen Morabito, our new Counselor at Large. Welcome to our chamber, and we'll be seeing you a lot for the next two years. Also, before we go, the mayor is here with the, with our finance director, and I, we have a couple items that he wants to bring up. If you don't mind, we can bring those up, because they may go into your committee, hopefully, okay? Mr. Mayor, you want to come up on nine and 10?
Calendar item number nine, communication from the mayor relative to supplemental budget requests for fiscal year 2014.
Mr. Mayor, just so you know, number 10 will be tabled, because that's tied in with the tax rate for next week.
That's fine. And I'm just here basically to see if I can answer any questions in anticipation. I would imagine this will probably be going to Ways and Means. But I just wanted to be here as it is on the calendar, and rather than go through it each item by item, I would just let the council know that I am here, along with our finance director, to answer any questions that any of you may have regarding these supplemental budget requests. And as you alluded to, and I know the clerk has not read calendar item number 10 yet, but again, that's just giving us the ability to double the exemption on any of the exemptions that are given because of disabilities or, you know, age, income, and so on. So, you know, we're here, and if the council should have any questions now, or if you'd rather wait till a subcommittee, we can answer questions then as well.
We do plan on having a subcommittee meeting next Monday before the regular city council meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Okay, back to regular order of business. Counselor Rigo, your subcommittee report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Wednesday, November 20th, the Ways and Means Subcommittee had before it the union contracts between the City of Revere and the, and both the Superior Officers and the Police Employees Association. The details of that, of that contract include a 1% raise effective July 1st, 2012, a 1% raise effective January 1st, 2013, a 2.5% raise July 1st, 2013, and a 4.5% raise July 1st, 2014. The total amount of the package, we were informed, is approximately $1.3 million. And this was reported out favorably by the committee.
On the, we have two separate votes for two separate contracts. We have the police patrolmen and the police superior officers. On the patrolmen.
Shall the city council approve the union contract between the City of Revere and the Revere Police Employees Association? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan is absent. And Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the contract has been granted.
Voting so ordered. On the superior contracts, I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, can I vote on this?
Madam Vice President.
Just for Madam Clerk, can I vote on the superior officers? The patrolman doesn't affect me.
The ruling in the past has been, it has, it has to be a vote directly for them. This is an overall vote for everybody, if I'm correct, you know, it's, Madam Clerk? On the contract.
Shall the city council approve the union contract between the City of Revere and the Revere Police Superior Officers Association? Counselor Rigo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Correggio.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino.
Present.
Present. Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Penta.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Novoselsky.
Yes.
Yes, the contract has been approved.
Voting so ordered.
Mr. President.
Counselor Riordan.
I'd rather change, I'd change my votes to an abstention at this point.
To present.
Present.
Calendar item number five, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Terratech Construction as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number six, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Stephen Demato as a constable.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number seven, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Nathaniel Green as a constable.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number eight, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of LaMontaine Brothers Inc. as a licensed drainlayer.
Appointments Committee.
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor seeking adoption of Chapter 73, Section 4 of the Acts of 1986.
Place on the table.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the mayor include with all union contracts submitted to the city council for approval, a cost analysis from the Director of Finance, and a verification of funds from the city auditor.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be pretty quick. After the last contract that got sent down, I think there were some questions, and there was, there was a little bit of a heated back and forth, and I think this would clarify and maybe help alleviate any future issues. So I think going forward, it would be helpful to get both of these pieces of information along with the contract. Thank you.
Anybody else? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 12, motion presented by Counselor Rigo, that the mayor request the Director of Finance to provide an update on the costs associated with the emergency repairs to the Winthrop Avenue sewer line.
Counselor Rigo.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion pretty much speaks for itself. I think we all bonded $2 million for this emergency repair, and we've seen some work being done. I just, it would be nice to get an update, either written or in person. I think a written update would be fine, just in terms of how much money has been spent and where that money is being spent, either on, you know, whether it be police details or work being done or material. So I think it would be good, it would be good for us to get an update and understand exactly where we are, knowing that we're not getting any principal forgiveness on the loan that we bonded. So speaks for itself. Thank you.
Counselor Penta.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, if I can ask to make a motion, a friendly amendment to it. If we can get an update on the schedule of work and when it's going to be completed and finished, because I thought they'd be a lot further along than they are now, and I heard they just finished a gas line. I mean, so, if we can just add that as a friendly amendment to get that, thank you.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to add a friendly amendment to that, that the residents down there in the neighborhood be notified exactly of the bus and motor vehicle routes that are going to be taken down there, because I've had some calls from people that are concerned about buses driving through the neighborhood. And I hope whatever is done down there will be done in a manner that will be least intrusive to the residents that live not only in Ward 5, but also in Counselor Penta's Ward 1. So I'd like to see some type of a schedule as to what routes those buses and other vehicles will be taken during the construction. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, Counselor, Counselor Rigo.
I was just going to say that, that's fine with me.
Okay, and just an update, everybody. I know we've been getting a lot of complaints about Harris Street coming up to the Parkway, about the traffic, and how it's backed up to Beach Street. Well, I had a meeting with the chief, and if everybody knows where Winthrop Ave. is blocked, and there's still a green light cycle, what they're doing, we've put a police officer at the corner of Harris Street and the Parkway to allow the traffic go through the Winthrop Ave. cycle and also the Harris Street cycle. So it seems to be working, and a lot better. Everybody seems to be happy with it. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Mr. President, for putting that, suggesting that, that has helped a lot. But I do want to say that, you know, we are conscious of how aggravating this is. It's a necessary evil, and everybody's conscious of what has to be done. The gas line had to be done first, before the rest of the work could be done. I think it's going to go smoother from here on in, and it is going to be painful, but we all know that it needs to be done. Thank you.
Counselor, I don't think anything like this will be smooth.
As smooth as possible.
Right. And, you know, I know we went through, you know, Counselor Guanasso and Counselor Powers went through the bridge replacement several years ago, and that was not, not happy, you know, and we're going to be in the same scenario here. So, on the motion, all in favor, as amended, all opposed, vote and so ordered.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Counselor Powers, that the mayor request the Mass Highway Department to arrange to have the construction material, including a dumpster and flammable products, removed from the construction site located at the entrance to Rice Avenue. The site, in its present condition, constitutes a threat to the public safety and general health.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, whether we, some of us may or may not know, construction on that bridge has stopped, on the General Edwards Bridge. The company that was doing the construction weren't, work went bankrupt. They are no longer doing work in the Commonwealth. I understand there's a bonding company involved that has taken over now. I really don't see any work being done on that bridge within the next couple of months with the winter coming on us. The, I was down there the other day, and I found, there was an open cabinet I found, and it had a container of gas, a five-gallon container of gasoline, three or four other containers with diesel fuel, a 50-gallon container outside of a cabinet with, loaded with diesel fuel, and a dumpster loaded with trash and tires. And I think this is something that has to be dealt with quickly. The board of health has to make sure that they contact Mass Highway and get that dumpster out of there. And also, I believe that fire prevention should be involved in this, because of the flammable materials being kept in that area down there. And there's another issue also, it's the, they've put up scaffolding all along the bridge where they were working. And that scaffolding is still up there, and I think that, if you look at it, it's an invitation to some mischievous youths to climb up on that scaffolding and get seriously hurt. So I would hope that the mayor would be contacting Mass Highway, and this would be done as quickly as possible. Get that flammable material out of there, and get that dumpster out of there, and deal with the scaffolding. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. On the motion, all in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Late communication.
Late communication from the retirement board relative to retirement benefits of John Walsh.
Motion placed on file. All in favor, all opposed, vote and so ordered. Okay, before we, before we adjourn, I just want to remind everybody, tomorrow night, down on the Beachmont VFW at 5:00, Mass Badge and City Revere, gotten together for a free Thanksgiving dinner. So everybody's invited, no charge, and hope to see you all there. Counselor Powers.
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President.
So go ahead, Counselor Powers.
I'd like to also offer a happy Thanksgiving and a healthy Thanksgiving to all of the residents of the City of Revere. Thank you, Mr. President.
And that's the same thing for me, to all the folks out there, and from all the city councilors, happy Thanksgiving, and to my Jewish friends, happy Hanukkah, as everybody's saying these days, happy Thanksgivingka. Motion to adjourn.